Welcome, everybody, to the June 12, 2017, regularly scheduled Midland Public Schools Board of Education meeting. If at this time, everyone could turn off their cellphones, the cellphones will interfere with our feed. Hopefully, we have new, so who knows? And at this time, if everyone would stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Scott, if you can do roll.
The kids really want it.
Yes.
All right, I think they turned it on.
President Branson.
Here.
Vice President Singer.
Here.
Treasurer for Z.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blake.
Here.
Member Friedel.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Moving into item two, which is our consent agenda. Item 2.1 is approval of the regular meeting minutes from our May 15, 2017 Board Meeting and also the revised Special Board of Education meeting minutes from our Special Board Meeting on May 5.
Angela, I wanted to address the Special Board meeting minutes from it.
Okay, thank you.
So after that Special Board meeting, we had a meeting with Brad, and we realized that we had an error in the minutes, so that's why you're doing the revised minutes today.
Okay.
In that meeting, it was brought up that Brad was still a no vote or had some issue with the furniture because there was some background in the furniture that wasn't included in the packet.
Okay.
Both Bob Cooper and I were not picking up on that or aware of that until we met later.
Okay.
And so we, Bob chased down the detail, which was the individual prices of the furniture, which since I sent to all of you, SFO, I'd seen it, the rest of you hadn't, and so I had sent that to you, and I did check on that. And so there was an error in there, and I think that clarifies a whole bunch of the questions that Brad had in that meeting for him. It came from French, which is not the normal procedure, so French designs, hands it off to Barton Mallow, and then they bid it out, and Barton Mallow was the bidding and the process coming in. Now furniture never really went through Barton Mallow.
Okay.
It was French, and Susan Carlson just hadn't done that before, and we didn't see the detail. We had the detail, but we didn't know it wasn't attached when she gave it to Cindy for the Board meeting, so it wasn't there, and so it should be good going forward.
All right, thank you for the clarification. All right, item 2.2, the following persons are recommended for employment for the 2017-18 school year. 2.3, are teachers attaining tenure status?
Can I go back to 2.2 on you?
Yes, you may.
And I'm going to introduce them later, but so you can hold still for a minute. But Janet Greif is not here tonight, she has her last Board meeting in Bay City, and so she needs to complete that as well. We do have Matt Wenzel in the audience with us, I see Matt in the back. And of course, you know Margaret, and so we have Margaret in the room as well, and we have Melissa Toner in the room as well, which I'll do under administrative appointees in a little while, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so 2.3, teachers attaining tenure status. 2.4, are tenured teachers who have requested a leave of absence for the 2017-18 school year? 2.5, are the following staff members who have announced their resignation with those effective dates noted? 2.6 is approval of the payment of the school system's bills for the month of April. And 2.7 are legal invoices for payment.
Mary brought a question up on, there's a different one there for you that kind of falls under that category, where you normally see our law firms, there's one there for Dearborn Public Schools, and so that's the Equity Caucus that we belong to, the 32 old harmless districts, most of them are Oakland County, and Dearborn just happens to be the treasurer for the organization this year, so.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we adopt consent agenda items 2.1 through 2.7 as listed.
Support. All right, move by Scott, supported by Mary. At this time, is there any discussion?
I'm very excited to see Janet Greif coming back to us from Bay City. I think that's a great move on our part, and excited for the future there. Excited for Matthew Wenzel at Midland High as well.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Do we have to adopt the matrix that was presented to us, or is that just a plan moving forward as your work in progress?
The...
No, that's just the plan that we're presenting to you.
Yeah.
The reorg of the Central Office Administration.
All right. All right, at this time, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. All right, moving into Agenda Item Three, Board of Education Matters. 3.1, I think, do I turn it over to you to begin with?
Sure.
All right, Central Park logo.
I'm just going to turn it right over. So Central Park, as we're working on some parts of Central Park, and Shannon and Bridget and many of the students are here tonight to present to you, so I will turn it over to them.
Hello? Yes, it's working. Hi, I'm Shannon Blazey. I am one of the co-principals for Central Park Elementary. I have to get used to saying that, it's new. Tonight, we have a few presentations for you. We're going to share our new logo and our new mascot, as well as our new Central Park Elementary school song. And just to give you a little background, Mrs. Hockemeyer, the other co-principal, the two of us went into the Dow High Commercial Art Class and worked with Mr. Gladhill's art students and gave them some background on what kind of school we are going to become. And they created from that language some representations that we ended up choosing for our logo and our mascot. And today, I've got the creators. I have Anna Hale, who created the logo, and I've got Gwen Cook, who created the mascot, and they are going to give us a little more background on their designs.
So when I first heard that we were designing for the elementary school, I was really excited, and I started thinking about how I could show in a single logo kind of the different aspects of the elementary school because I really loved the idea of the explorers and that being the mascot, so I wanted to incorporate something with that, for sure. But then also of this being STEM school and having the focus on science, technology, math. So I kind of, I really liked the image of a compass rose and that connection with the idea of the explorers. So I ended up doing this compass rose with the outside being a gear to emphasize that there's the explorers and it's a STEM school. And the font choice also, I wanted to pick something that would echo the round shapes, the circular shapes in the compass rose and the orange circle, so the shapes in the font are really rounded and a more professional look. So, thank you.
Looks great.
Thank you, it looks fabulous.
Very nice.
Okay, so when I thought about the elementary school, I wanted to create something timeless and also that invoked, you know, a child, an exploration, and something that was very, you know, good for this time period. So of course, space is massive, and we're still finding out so much more information daily on it, and so I thought of an astronaut being very relatable to today and the future, which is why I picked that. But I also wanted to create something that was recognizable instantly for both kids and adults alike, and so then the astronaut is also holding the flag with the logo on it to connect the two together.
Very nice. Nice.
So the next part of our presentation is our new school song, and we have to thank Mrs. Barbara Jacques and also Kelsey Williams for helping our students learn our school song and teaching the principals the school song. And some parents, and so could I have our singers come on out to the front, please?
Do they get extra credit for coming to a Board meeting?
Do you want to maybe reshoot them so parents can see them? Take pictures? Not a bad idea.
Then you can take the screen up.
Maybe put the screen up and put them in front of...
Yeah, where's the camera that can, they probably want to make sure it's on TV, too.
Parents, we had a pre-session with...
Okay. Wow. Thank you so much, and you all look so sharp all dressed up. Are you all excited for next year?
I take a shower.
Excellent. Excellent. Excellent.
It's hot out.
That's great. Are you guys excited for next year?
Yeah.
Do you go buy the new school?
I use my new house.
Excellent, good. All right, well, thank you all for coming tonight.
Barbara, I think it's wonderful, the words that you chose for the song. I hear the "Explore a new adventure" and "Wonder will inspire us" and "Fertile ground", and it just hags what we're trying to do with the school, so thank you for your words.
Oh, my absolute pleasure. And I would like to present you with this to place in the school.
We knew after we had a logo and a mascot that every school needs a song, and Barbara and I have worked together for many years at Plymouth, and she's also the music teacher at Carpenter. So when we approached her, just knowing the talent that she has, I'm just so thankful, and she brings such joy to the music program, and I just wanted to note that Barbara is retiring, and so this will be her last adventure with us, and we're so thankful, so thank you, Mrs. Jacques.
Thank you, boys and girls. You can find your parents' parents, thank you for bringing them, we appreciate it.
Why they're getting situated out there. School's about 97, 98% complete. If you've had a chance to go by, I was a little bit surprised today, even the parking lots are going in and being paved, so, and we passed inspection, we can go in, you know, at any point in time. And now, the students are going to go through on Wednesday and Thursday.
Oh, are they?
Two schools are meeting there, I think by grade levels.
Okay.
Taking the kids through, so if you want to see something neat on Wednesday and Thursday, ask Cindy for the times, and it might be kind of fun to go see those reactions as they go through her.
Oh, that's great.
That's Thursday?
Yes. Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday.
All right.
I ask a question on the creators of the mascot and the logo, are those, I think those are students of the Midland Public Schools, is that correct?
They're Dow High students.
Graphic arts?
Yes.
Yes,美术arts class.
Yes. If you remember, well, you may not, a few years ago, when we did our new Midland Public Schools logo, we also had, assuming it was the same class.
It was.
And they came up with the same type of things that we were looking through, so.
That was fun.
Yes, very, very creative students who come up with those.
It's quite a process.
Right.
And you think, oh, that doesn't sound too tough, and then you look at 14 different logos and mascots, and you realize, oh, this is pretty tough to figure out what really tells the story that you want to tell.
And it's cool because they learn those presentation skills just like being in a business.
Right.
Right.
They make a great presentation during the MPS logo. Really good presentation.
I loved how the gear in the compass rose was already worked into the mascot as well, and the flag, and...
Yes, the thought that goes behind it's pretty neat.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, even when she was talking about the font and why she chose the font she chose.
Well, I like the fact that it's students, you know, from start to finish on that, so.
All right, moving on to 3.2, which is our June Shining Stars.
And our first shining star is Dave McDonald. Dave, would you like to join me here? I'll read a little bit about you, Dave, as you come up. Dave started in the district with GRBS, which was our cleaning company at the time, and moved to Envire Clean in January of 2015. In December of 2015, he began a new assignment at East Lawn. Mr. McDonald now serves in the first shift temporary building manager position at East Lawn, where he does an outstanding job. When you see him around, you can see him involved, he is how much he cares about the students, staff, and school. Our office received several Shining Star nominations for Dave. Among their comments, his nominators wrote, "Dave is an essential part of East Lawn family. Not only does he keep the building clean and running, he is also very helpful to any staff, student, and visitor he encounters. Dave was a great support when he wore the Eagle mascot costume and operated down the school to give outfits to children."
Now we know who's wearing the next one.
"Dave is always available and willing to help out in any way he can, a B Explorer outfit going for us. He takes care of problems right away, is great with kids, and has a great sense of humor. He helps our days run smoothly and has really stepped up to fill his position. Dave is awesome. He is not only keeps our schools clean and organized, he always has a smile on his face and can do positive attitude. He is the kind of staff and students always willing to step in and assist whenever and however needed. We are so blessed to have Mr. McDonald at East Lawn." Congratulations, Dave.
Congratulations, thank you.
You lost a piece of candy.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's part of your family.
Gift from Brad.
Our second shining star is Lynn Verduzo. Lynn, come up and join me. Lynn earned her Bachelor of Arts degree from Saginaw Valley State University in 1981 and a Master of Arts from Saginaw Valley in December of 1990. Lynn began her MPS career in 1989 as a 0.5 kindergarten teacher at Longview Elementary School. In 1991, she moved to Woodcrest to take a full-time kindergarten teaching position. In 2006, Lynn moved to first grade at Woodcrest, assignment which she continues today. Lynn was nominated for the Shining Star by an MPS parent. Among their comments were the following: Lynn is an excellent example of MPS shining star. She has been a blessing to our daughter this year, and as a parent, we couldn't be happier. She has a true passion for all children. She is always looking at every child, trying to stretch and challenge them in positive ways. Her bubbly, friendly, loving, encouraging personality is exactly what the kids need to see day in and day out in the classroom. No child is ever left or behind, as she has multiple eyes, ears, and hands. She's truly a gem and a phenomenal at what she does. She deserves special recognition. Congratulations, Lynn.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn, thank you. Congratulations, I well deserved. Thank you.
All right.
Not the real budget.
3.3. I was hoping it was something else fun, but what's not fun about the budget?
Should have had someone stay and accompany me with this, right?
Yes. All right, 3.3, so Presentation of the 2017-18 General Operating Budget.
Well, a little technical difficulty here in the writing.
We'll let the audience clear and get it up and running, huh?
All you have to do is left.
There it is.
All right, well, good evening. Just kind of to give you, as you know, one of the requirements of the state of Michigan is a law to adopt the balance budget by July 1st. So what I've got here is just the timeline we've been on, a very typical timeline for you, but the Board Workshop begins back in April, where we went through some of the general ideas for the budget, where we felt we might be going with the state and with our own local. And then where we're at tonight is the proposed 17-18 budget, which I'm about to show you to the Board and the public hearing that you will hold right afterwards, and then you will come back, as it says up here, to take Board action on the 26th. You'll adopt the 17-18 budget, and then you'll also approve the final 16-17 budget adjustment, which will vary again when they do the audit. But as you know, we have to start one budget before the other one's finished, and so there's a lot of estimations as you go there, especially for a district our size. There's a lot of money still out there, and while we work on it, we still get, people will say they're going to spend something that they don't quite spend, which is a good thing, but, so the numbers come in. So that's kind of where we're heading. Always like to remind everybody that unlike budgets, when people think of them at home or in a business, it's not advisory when you're talking about a public school budget, it is really just accounting about the source and how we're using public funds. And so that's why we do adjustments to match what's going on as we go through. So it gives us some guidelines, absolutely, but it's, as a public entity, we're really showing the public how we use the money that's given to us from various sources. One of the most important things that we do in this budget meeting, or the first budget, is we talk about the millage rates, and we establish those, and you know, later in our Board Packet, we have to establish those with the city of Midland because they issue a summer tax, and they need to know how much to issue there. Pretty standard millage rates here, the first one is 18 mills on the non-homestead, that's the standard one voted, voted two or three years ago, now it's good for 10 years, it's the most that you can levy, it's basically what every district in the state does on non-homestead. The second one is the hold harmless millage, it's calculated every year. So this year, it works out to be 1.7100. It's up slightly, about .0286, actually, to be exactly on. The way that's calculated is way back when, when they first gave us as a hold harmless district, they established the amount of money that you could raise per student. It's $415.31. Back then, it took five mills, actually more than five mills, to raise that amount. So over time, you can never raise anymore, so depending on where the taxable value is and how many students we have, that's going to change this millage year after year after year. Well, since neither of those are exact sciences when we're setting it right now, they also allow the following year for you to adjust it. If you levy too high one year, you got to take it down the next. If you didn't levy enough, you take it up. Typically, that's what happens. In this case, maybe we had a few more students than we thought. The other thing that we're starting to notice is we're getting bigger adjustments because the other part that's in there is the personal property tax exemption. You lose that. Now, it's made up through the state, but you have to put that into your calculations where the millage rate should go. I wish I could tell you that's a simple process, but you got to get all that information from the county, and then on top of it, especially in a district like Midland, we have to go back and have to subtract out Renaissance Zones, IFTs, oh, we offer a lot of things out there that as far as the district, even at the county level, it's really tough to figure out in time for this meeting. So what you can do is, they give you the number, you know how much personal property tax that you're losing, and we put that in there, but then the following year, we're going to have to adjust for those things that came in and out. So we're seeing slightly bigger adjustments as we go. Doesn't affect anything, we're following the rules, it's just, we're just seeing bigger adjustments either way because of the personal property tax. The other part is for our bottom, and if you remember when we started, I know I'll get this one right, 2.92 was the very first one, last year was 2.88, and now we're down to 2.72. We arrive at that by sending all our information in to our bond advisor, financial advisor, which is now with PFM, it used to be Startup Bar, State People. We talked to executive people, just a different company, and they look at all our taxable value, where it's going, et cetera, and set that. The reason it's going down, a lot of people think it's in terms of taxable value going up, in actuality, it's taxable value, and when they first start, they project the bond out over time. Really, they knew personal property tax was coming out of our taxable value back in 2015, and they just predicted it would drop our taxable value by bigger increments when they first started. So I think the first year, they thought we were going to drop by 13% taxable value, and the county only dropped by eight. And so this, I think last year, they're predicting four for this year, and it's down by one. So yeah, it does mean some of the real property is going up a little bit, but it just means that it's hard to predict the bond out in 15, 20, 25 years. And so we send it every year, right in mid-May, and goes back pretty quickly, and they tell us what we should be levying to do that. We don't want to over levy, if you want to get in that situation, of course you don't want to under levy, so that's where we stand today. State funding's interesting this year because unlike the previous years that I've done this, the state budget is not settled. Some years, it's not quite been settled, but we knew where they were going. The proposed closure of the MIPSers Retirement System to new teachers, if you've read anything about that, appeared to be, I'm going to say appeared to be, stumbling block between the governor and legislature. Actually, within, and I mentioned the last part there, in the last five days, it appears that both the budget and the MIPSers ideas come into a compromise someplace. So literally, while they worked on the compromise for the retirement system, which is, in essence, right now, there's a pension system, there's a hybrid pension system for any new teacher since 2010, where it's partially a pension and it's partially a investment, like in a 403B or 401K, et cetera. What the legislature's proposing on one side is that everybody gets closed out, you go to 401K plans, that's all you get. The governor's not so sure that's the way it should go, kind of believes in the hybrid plan, thinks it will pay off in the long run and it'll be there faster. It's a difference of opinion, and they both have people on both sides with numbers, some of their own fiscal agencies will say, you just extended this longer, you've got some big money, because you have to then pay up the system, if you will, so it's solving, because now you get no one else coming to the pension system to support those that are in the pension system. So they debated about what's the right thing to do. Appears they're heading towards a compromise, maybe one that encourages more people to go to the 401K retirement and less the pension, but the pension would still be there, but that part's not been determined, nor in some ways does that affect us. It affected us because they held up the budget, but they also sat down at the same time and started to head towards, you know, some kind of, I don't want to call it a compromise, but agreement on where we should be with the budget. So the main difference, if you remember back when I did this in April, was basically, are we going to get 50, 2X formula, 50 and 100 for districts, was it going to be 100 for everybody, which is the house version, and then there was the center version, which was like $88 and $166, and they were going to take some of the retirement funds that they give the district away, which wouldn't have been good for us. And the other question was, how much of the 31A at-risk money would we get? Okay, so those are the parts there. So it's not finalized, but we do have some agreement. So when you look at the budget and you look at the revenue side, I'll start there, here are the assumptions that we did in putting together the budget. It seems clear to us that the 2X formula is going to be in there, and it appears that it'll be $60 per student, okay? That brings us up to the foundational, if you will, of $8,411, because the other thing they did is it appears they're going to leave in, you have to remember, a year ago, they had to put a little extra money in a lot of the hold harmless districts because inflation, we weren't going to get any kind of an increase a year ago. And so they put in an extra $50, I think it was $51, each of those districts. They left that in the foundation. That's a good thing, because they could have pulled that back out, given a 60, taken away 51, and it wouldn't be very far ahead. And now it looks like they're going to be there. The latest projections for 31A money is about $525,000 that we're getting. Now, you're not going to see it in your original budget, because this is, and expenses have to equal revenue. And to put it in this, right now, I'd be putting in a line of revenue for it, and I'd just be putting in an expense line that really didn't mean anything to you, the expenses, and Brian will work on that, Mike will work on that, I guess we all will, but there are some things that could help us on the general fund side, and not going to see a fortune, but there are also some things that'll help us meet some of the requirements coming, like in literacy, with literacy coaches, so there's some things that we won't have to spend general fund money on. But we'll bring that at adjustment time, we'll keep you informed as we go, but it really didn't make any sense to put that in there now when we don't know how it's going to be spent. And to be honest, you know, that's one thing that can be fluid enough, that it can change enough, and as you remember, it ranged from 1.7 million, I think, on the proposals, to 100,000, so somewhere in between, but I don't think we should put that in the budget to worry about it just at this point in time, because again, equal expenses... And to put it in this, right now, I'd be putting in a line of revenue for it, and I'd just be putting in an expense line that really didn't mean anything to you, the expenses, and Brian will work on that, Mike will work on that, I guess we all will. There are some things that could help us on the general fund side, and not going to see a fortune. But there are also some things that'll help us meet some of the requirements coming, like in literacy, with literacy coaches, so there's some things that we won't have to spend general fund money on. But we'll bring that at adjustment time, we'll keep you informed as we go. It really didn't make any sense to put that in there now when we don't know how it's going to be spent. And to be honest, you know, that's one thing that can be fluid enough, that it can change enough. And as you remember, it ranged from 1.7 million, I think, on the proposals, to 100,000. So somewhere in between, but I don't think we should put that in the budget to worry about it just at this point in time, because again, equal expenses to the revenue that go together. Can carry some money over, so don't worry if we don't get it, the state delays on us a little bit, we'll still have that money, it's just when we can use that. And the other thing that they're all pretty clear on is, we're going to maintain the MIPSers cost offsets. They're not going to take anything out of that, it appears to be there. And I don't know, I know I've explained it numerous times, but just again, the retirement system is being supported with state payment that comes to us, and then we turn around and give it right back to them. And it does two things, it puts a cap on top of it, and then they're kind of paying down a little bit of the difference. So the 147A pays down some of it, 147C puts a cap on it. I think the 147C is usually not touchable, they kind of know they're going to keep doing that, but the 147A, it's always like that little carrot that will go. If we don't fund that, that's always going to mean more dollars out of the district pockets someplace. So it's important. So we're capped right now, I think it's 25, coming years, 25.96 is the highest we would pay for anybody. Without it, you'd be in the 37, 38, depending on who would win in which part they are. There's seven or eight different ways. Some of the assumptions for MPS then, we're projecting from our consultants and everything that we know, enrollment drop about 63 students. It's a good thing, if I'm wrong on that, to the high side, in other words, it wouldn't hurt your feelings, like back next year, and said we have the same number of students in the district, it's a very good thing. It is one of the fastest ways to turn our district around financially, no question. We're talking about a blended count of 76, 29. We do know, and I just listed a few of the grants that are coming out of there, so you know why the revenue's dropping just a little bit, the number of students will be the biggest factor on it. Reductions in federal programs, 25,000, as you've heard, the title funds and what's going on with the federal government, those are fluctuating, and it looks like the state's saying we're going to get less of both, and the initial allows to show that. You'll also see a reduction on the expense side, too, because we don't take any federal dollars, it doesn't go out on the other side. We're always too, with ESA and special education, how much it's costing, it's varying, and this coming year, it looks like we would receive about $161,000 less than we had in the past. The trig technology grants are the ones that have been there, especially since the state turned over to statewide testing on computers. There was quite a bit of money out there, and it's just going away now, so we spent the last of it. It's helped tremendously this time. One of the ways we are getting more money through the ESA is the IDA flow-through money. We, for a long time, have provided parochial services. It's not the same as what we've tried if it came to MPS, but we will, mainly in their speech, but if it be any special education services. We provide those services because those parochial schools are in our school district. We're kind of got looking here, not myself, Lori Holderby's here, too, where I forget to. A lot of people going to make a budget, not me just sitting there and doing that. Lori does the whole, like, the business people and everybody that we have to go to to get budget numbers from. It's kind of important that they all pulled together here. But Lori and I started looking at this going, I think we should be getting some money from the ESA, we're not sure why we're doing this, and either why they're not doing it or why we're not getting any money for it. Not a problem that way. So we've been working with them, and they are flowing through money. It's federal money, it's meant to serve the parochials, it's a portion and share question, that they're getting an equal amount, and so we're just going to finally get paid for those services. It doesn't reimburse the strength of them. That's not what we're asking for, there was a portion and share that should come through. Looks like going forward, we'll retain that just because we have the capacity, and we approached ESA about them taking it over. There are little parts that they would have a hard time building, and so we think it might be best for us to keep managing like we have, and just have them flow the money through to us. So the income, we'll never fully cover everything you do, but it's better than we've been for a while. So I wanted to show you the enrollment, because you often want to see the trends, because when we talk about it, it's such a big factor in what we do. And so as you look at this one, this just kind of shows you the breakdown, 1516 through 1718 estimates. And the other thing I'd point out to you, we typically, I typically leave 89 up there because that's the last year of 20J money, so we had quite a few students, we were getting 290 some dollars more per student each time. That was the kind of the heyday at times, and when it went away, it kind of gives you where to compare to. But just so you know, you can see how the elementary versus secondary versus special ed breakdown goes, and of course, don't forget, we get total numbers, but then it has to be blended over time. Remember, they measure 10% from the February before and 90%. You get partials, and there's a whole bunch that goes in the county that's older out there. But just so you can see, it's kind of interesting, the elementary appears to have stabilized or if not grown a little bit, that can be part of stuff we're doing, behind, et cetera, and programming. And as we knew, that bubble of birth has to kind of go down at the secondary level, and you're just seeing it. It's not dramatic, because we get feed-ins from other programs, parochial, for example, that end in A grade, so we're just getting some of those consequences. Just to give you an idea, if you really want to see a trend line, I think that's the one that showed, and I think I put that in the board package, too, but it's really been over that last little bit there, as you look at it, that we've, I think 1314 was, I'm scared my kids are leaving, because that was when, that last line, it kind of went way down, we lost like 150 more students, I think, than Lynn had projected at the time, and since that time, it's flattened itself out considerably, and that's made a difference in where we stand now. You could put a birth rate in Midland County on there, and it would match, you know, pretty perfectly the same shape for around that graph. It's just, there's less kids out there, and there's more competition for those kids, but there's just less diagram. That's the one thing, when we've worked with consultants, feels that we're just grabbing, if you take the birth rate, just what percentage are you getting in kindergarten? It's gone up now, it's, I'm not telling you it's like 10% up, it's more like 3% or 4% up from where we were. It might have been down around 59, it's a 60. Good thing, but it's just. This is how the per pupil foundational allowance goes. I would just tell you, it will fluctuate depending on how much the local brings in. You see that 41531 from the hold harmless, you can't change that, this is all per pupil, by the way. The local millage will depend on the taxable value of the non-homeside, okay? So if it goes up and you see the percentage go up, then the state aid payment's going to go down, because there's only so much to get there. That's why we always tell people, too, if the hold harmless millage were ever voted down, that's our problem, the state doesn't make that up. That's the one thing that is above and beyond, so they would match the other ones. And it just varies over time. In fact, you can see there back in 89, that 20J payment, that Governor Granholm had taken away, was $293 a student. It's some idea of where. So, general fund, we're looking at 79,000, 79 million. And so, 79,128,914, you get the chance to see where those funds are coming from, pretty consistent with budgets you've seen in the past as for where the breakdown is coming from, state versus local, et cetera. And I guess the only other thing I would say there is that it's down about 900,000, roughly 950, from where it was this year, from the March budget adjustment, which was the last time that we gave you the budget. So that's where we stand, right there. Okay, the expenditure side, we keep using our balanced our budget. It seems to be working. It's the process of maintaining billing and department expenditures close to the level they were at for 1617, actually, close to the level they were at 1516, actually, close to the level they were at 1450. Since we've started this, it's more of a process, it's just our terminology for process of, you come in and tell us, not what you had last year, but what do you need and what do you need for this year? You know, it doesn't make us the favorite people at that time of year, but it is a good question, and it has helped us maintain the supply side of our budget. We are ending some of our employee concessions for the past two years. You remember, people that have been on the board for a while, we did ask for concessionary packages from all our employee groups, and that's coming to an end. So we do have some payments, one-time budget surplus protection stipends, with the states, the steps have been reinstated, and whenever the steps come back in, it's no fault of anybody, there's just a lot of people there waiting to step, and so that makes a difference in how much money we have going out at that point in time. As you know, as part of this, I'm pretty pleased with the fact that we actually have every employee group settled, and we've had it done way early this time. We get approximately 1% salary increase from employees, and went along with the reduced budget surplus protection stipend, that was part of the deal. We do have an increase in medical premiums of 8%. Remember, we lost some of the runoff costs to this, it's kind of a little bit of a trade off. We are decreasing that this year, but it will happen in January, the district's funding of the health savings accounts. You know, we raised the individual's contribution to their health savings account. In other words, the deductibles are like 100, 200 less than we funded a year ago. We know we have to go there, because no matter what you do, if the health keeps increasing, we have to find ways to keep under, for our employees' sake, too, the hard cap, because the state does limit how high we can spend, so it's important we find affordable health plans that are good for our employees, but don't violate it, because once you go over, you're on the hook for the full amount of whatever you go over, so it's important we find plans that work. There's a reduction in that federal program, matches the revenues, and then staffing patterns, it's kind of a process, I couldn't explain it to you totally at times, but we're always looking and evaluating positions, and it could be the time of year, it could be that year, it could be at the end of the year, where we sit there and say, okay, what did we just do? Was that good, bad, indifferent? So we always try to analyze, I guess is the best way I can say, sometimes it doesn't mean a reduction, a step down, sometimes it doesn't mean addition or step down. Absolutely true, it's kind of both. Just looking at it from the standpoint of, let's analyze it, let's see what makes sense, let's see what's good for our kids, and we kind of work from there, but it does make a difference. These are the proposed expenditure changes, these are the major categories that you would get there, so it shouldn't be a surprise, the salaries category, and again, the first column there is the March, so that was the March budget adjustment that you approved. It's the latest 1617 budget I have. And then there's the one we're going to propose for 1718, and red at the top, second column over. And what you see there is salaries are up about 600,000. You put the 1% in there, some of the other things we did, that's kind of where I'd expect it. You might wonder why the benefits are down, just shy of a million, if you remember, and that benefits category would be the early retirement incentive, which was in our budget this year, about 900,000. So that's what happened, the benefits really just kind of remained stable, but when that comes out of it, there's going to be a drop in that part of it. Purchase services and contracted services, about the same, you know, those are anything that we purchase from somebody that's not on our payroll, so picture everything we have to hire out to do. Contractor services a little more on the repair and maintenance side, but they're all the same general category. I would guess the majority of those two are due to viroclean, the contractors up a little bit, wouldn't be all of it, it could be everything from, we might, and I know we didn't, we chopped down more trees because of the ash, or that all of a sudden, we were doing quite a few there to be saved, so that was there. Supplies and materials, remember what I said, it's pretty much staying the same, down a little bit there, could be various reasons there. I think on the capital outlay, a little bit of seeing the bonds effect there, there's less to take out of the general fund, not that we still don't, because, for example, this summer, you know, we're doing, for example, bathrooms, and so it had to come from someplace, and so that would be out of capital fund, but you're starting to see some of the bond effect of, there's another source to take care of some of those capital outlays. Leases, kind of an impressive amount, but that's the copier lease. So the copier lease finally goes away, we're going to buy them through the bond now, because that takes, that lease was there every year over and over again, that really helps offset some of the increases that we had this year. And the transfers, again, are just various things with the money's going out of the system. So again, you'll see that our expenditures are down about 776,000. So general fund, again, this is by account, at 78 million, like I said, down about 776,000. You can see where everything goes, I think the key thing, and this doesn't change much, we're a personnel-heavy field business, and you'll see, if you look at it pretty closely, somewhere between 85 and 86% of our expenditures are typically on personnel of some kind. You'll see the other there, the 14.5, that hasn't changed much, maybe a little higher when you have a little older staff, sometimes more experienced staff, but it sticks right around there, so it's pretty close to being the same old thing. Another way to look at that exact same thing, so I try to give you a couple, this one's by function. Sometimes, I know you guys are interested in just a different look to say, okay, so where's, where's the money going? So you can look up here and say, okay, 65% is the classroom instruction, student support, instructional support. You can see the other, or the administration, how much it is. Support services tend to be like the financial business office, tech people, those things. So you can see where they go, maintenance, transportation, athletics, but just a different look at where the expenditures go when you see the list of expenditures. And one of the things we got in the board packet was kind of like a chart, if you will, that kind of showed you the different categories and the different functions, you could see where a different amount of money's going. But it's just two ways to look at it. And then, of course, you're always interested in the bottom line, so when we propose the budget, where are we going? Again, that's, in the first column, that's the March budget, so what you're looking at is that 1617 adjusted budget, not our final one, so whenever we start talking fund balance, I got a question. I don't know the exact fund balance until I see that last audited number, so we know exactly what it is. So this is a guess of where you think it will be. But when you look at this then, you'll see where the revenues were at the different times, and now again, if you look at it, you can see the two numbers I talked about on the revenues and expenditures. In both cases, we expect, and I know it had been a while last year, you hadn't seen it for a while, but we expect excesses revenues, in other words, we certainly are staying within what we're taking in within that year, and not having to touch fund balance. There is a category called budget variance, that can either go up or down, and it could be either like an increase in revenue or a decrease in expenditures or increase in expenditures. I mean, there's, variance takes all of it. 1%, I think I've told you many times, historically, it runs 2% to 3%, it's more close to 2% in the last few years, as money's gotten tighter, but we budget one to be conservative. I don't want anyone thinking, I'm not trying to, when it's there at the end, we'll show it to you, but this is what we try to budget for. So you can see the surplus, if you will, and the money that we'll be able to put into fund balance is about 1.6, 1.7 million there. So again, you've got excess revenue, you'll have some variance that'll go in. What I put there is the unrestricted fund balance, there's fund balance, that's everything that's above and beyond, right? Within fund balance, there is what we call inventory and prepaid items. Money's gone, you can't spend it, but it's part of fund balance. So if someone gives you just the fund balance number, that's in there. The other thing that's in there is anything that was, I'll call it gifts or restricted money. Restricted money has a purpose, you can only use it for that purpose. So what I tried to show you this time was the unrestricted. Sometimes, when you look at the budget document, you also see spendable. It's another term you see, spendable fund balance. Well, the spendable includes all the gift money, because you can spend it, just can't spend it on anything you want to. So just throwing that out there. Unrestricted wise, looks, if our projections come in, somewhere around 11.8, 11.9 million. And you can see, because the curious part is always the percent of expenditures. Now, as we do that, and it's always debatable, and we always talk to people about how much should you have in your, your fund balance? And it's always, you know, it depends who you are, what you think's the right number. Almost every one of our employee groups, I can't think of one that hasn't, have all agreed to look at next year, not actually the year after, 18, 19, any kind of raise is going to be based on how much we have in fund balance. So I think Mike has presented to those groups and myself, when we've talked to them, that we would like a fund balance somewhere between this 13 and 15 or 16, and, you know, when people ask me, do you really need that? I would just always tell people that, when you look at it, and maybe I could show you by jumping to a trend there. If you look at this, just so you can see a trend and the reason it's important, you know, if you look there, there's a lot of years that little blue line is not as high as the orange one, except for the last three. All those times you were, and it's okay, that's why you put together a fund balance, so that you can allocate when you need to, but that's what got you through. So before my time in this position, you used that funds balance to make it through. I don't know if there's a magic number either, and if you go around, it's around, the state is different in every community. I'm just telling you that that, that got you through, as you look at it, there's a good five years up there where you had to use it. There's a couple years, like 10, 11, you might say, oh, we were okay then, that was a big influx, one-time payment kind of thing, yeah, we made it, but didn't know we were going to. And even as late as 1516, excuse me, 1415 was the first time, we thought we were going to dip in further than we did. was the first time, we thought we were going to dip in further than we did. And in fifteen, sixteen, we ended up being to the good, but much bigger to the good than we thought. So I just wanted to show you that. Another way you might look at it is kind of over trends. And so I would just say, as you look at that, again, you'll see that we were really taking her down pretty low there. And percentage-wise, we're working our way up. That's true fund balance there. That's not unrestricted one. So both graphs are just showing you how much we have in fund balance. So as you look at that, what I would just tell you is it's been a savior as we've looked at things, and it's helped us make it through to that point. And so as you look ahead, I'm not going to say you're never going to dip into that, because you're not going to build that to fifty percent, say, oh, this is great. But you've got to have some money there for lots of different reasons. So I look at the budget and see that we're still making good progress. We've had, I said it earlier, not just the people that put together the budget, but our employees through this time that worked really hard and helped us by the concessions they've made, hard work they do. It's not just the process, but it's getting there. So I always look at that as kind of a total team effort. So that's the budget. I certainly would answer any questions for you. You know, you have to follow with the public hearing and the budget.
All right. So at this time, we'll move into item three point four, which is a public hearing of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen general operating budget. So do I have questions? Or Bob, comments?
I guess one thing, Bob, you talked about the taxes, and we're at two point seven two. Now, that's split, right, for summer taxes for the city folks?
Yes, we do one point. If in the city of, that would be split. County only assesses once in the winter, so that doesn't get split. So yes, it'd be one point, in fact, summer tax resolution coming up here, we'll say one point three six. We'll split that. Old harmless gets split too, but we try not to do that equally, because it's like playing with fire. That's we typically take like point nine, and then we follow up with whatever remain is. It's too tough to predict, because sometimes if I can get a better read, like we suddenly know we got more students in August before September, I can adjust a little bit more, maybe a little closer. But we've been pretty accurate here.
Okay. And then with the thirty-one A, that if we do get the five hundred and twenty-five thousand, then we'll probably see changes in the school improvement plan and different things. We'll be able to invest differently?
Yeah. And I would caution you, too far on that, you know, Brian and I will differ just a little here. And so I'm a little more cautious in service. Brian's very excited about that money, where he can close the achievement gap and some of the things he can do there. And I'm still not sold that Bob's correct on the five hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's why he put, not put a figure in there.
Right, right.
I think there's some, still some things going on in Lansing that makes me very cautious of that. And so I hear it the other way. I also know that there's many new things tied barred to that language. So at one time at-risk money, when I was the previous district, was pretty much, I could use it wherever I chose. That's not the case. If you follow the new language, it's tied to third grade reading legislation, to the math legislation, and some improvement goals, some restrictions. And so I think some of the things that Brian and the principals have talked about may not meet these guidelines, but we'll wait and see where the proof of putting is once it's officially approved. For that part, Brian would agree on.
Well, I'm excited that there's a chance that we'll get that money. And I think it'll make a huge difference for that.
And let me go back a little bit just about that, at-risk funds. So that payment I talked about earlier to the Equity Caucus, they have worked very hard on that. But also, since I've been here, I've raised probably a little bit of cane with their two local representatives about at-risk kids and at-risk kids. And I give Gary Glenn credit. He has gone into Lansing and has advocated on that, that, you know, minimum book schools, they have less at-risk kids. They still have at-risk kids, and that money's a hell of a risk. And so they, the present language only allows us to capture a portion of that. Bob knows his numbers better than me. So a typical district that's not one of the thirty-two districts will get a five hundred?
Seven hundred.
Seventy-seven.
And we are, under the new language, so we got our foot in, but under the new language, we would get thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent, only thirty percent. So we get thirty cents on the dollar compared to every other district that's a dollar. So we're making progress.
But we've got ways to go.
Still got some work to do.
I guess the other thing that I noticed was with the IDEA flow-through services through the ESA and the sixty-six thousand dollars that we're getting this year and haven't gotten from years. So Lori, a big thank you for helping us uncover that. And it's, I would love to have the definition of flow-through, when for twenty years we haven't seen the flow-through. So I'm glad to see that sixty-six thousand coming through.
Yeah, in all honesty, the portion of shares we got into, and I think Lori would agree, it's, you have federal regulations and you have state regulations. And in some cases, it's not clear which one. So I think part of it was this conflict of the two areas and nobody really knowing who wins every month. It starts with who even is the local education agency. In some cases in the state, the ISD can act. In other cases, it's us all the way. So I think that's where some of that difficulty came from.
But I will give Lori, Lori, Bob, Mary Lawers, a ton of credit on that one, that they dug deep and they went to MDA and got a definition of that LEA, which hence may give us the ability to go to the ESA and say, this is not right. And that is sixty-six thousand multiplied by many years potentially. So that's a big, big time.
Absolutely. I was excited, of course, with the employee groups all settling and then the one percent raises. And then I sure hope we can, we can hit the fifteen percent fund, general fund balance, because that would even, that'd be a one percent raise for next year. And that would be great for the employee groups as well.
There, there comments.
I just want to say thank you to Lori and Bob, and anybody else who was involved, the graphs, the charts. It made it understandable to me for my first time through. So I appreciate that.
And I would like to comment that after the years, it's so nice to see the fund balance increasing after so many years of watching it decrease. And we needed to use it for very important reasons. But it's just kind of refreshing to see that. I think it's time and that our budget is looking good.
Healthy.
And healthy, yep, so that we can share that hopefully with our employees. So thank you for all your hard work, everyone. Anyone else?
I guess I feel it's just physically responsible when you have fifteen percent fund balance to be able to give raises and talk about raises. But when you don't have that healthy fund balance, it makes it real hard, a hard sell, and you put your district at risk. So I'm just pleased with that, that budget.
Brad, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just curious. I was waiting.
Yes.
All the tables are great. I just, on appendix D, we have the ratio of students per certified staff and students per teacher. And then we have students per administrator. And there's some moves in the students per administrator. And I was just curious if there's a target that we were going after to, that is a rule of thumb that we should be in.
No. And I think the reason you see that, of course, in a graph guy, I noticed it right away. One of the things is we took the administrators pretty low. So it's kind of a false, if you will, the number, so the graph jumped up, the number of students per administrator jumped up, because we took the number of administrators. So kind of when we talked about adjusting staffing, at the end of the year, you know, it's like when you get one of those moments, you go, I think we pushed that one a little too far. And that was, actually, people in the building too. So you're getting feedback going, oh, you cut that tight enough, it made this harder. So it's really been us getting back to where I want to tell you.
Bob's being politically correct, Brad. By nature, I'm very aggressive. And I came in and I did. That first two months on the job where Linda walked in and said we were eighty students missing, and I had to find eight hundred thousand, we're already at declining budget. Bob's not kidding. I wondered what I had done. And so I, that next year, I went extremely aggressive. And Mary was still in high school. She knows what I did at high schools and what I did at places. And as that budget began to recover, I self-reflected and say, where can we do that? And we added some back, but we didn't add it the same. And so, you know, I feel like we're a changing organization. And so those who want, we look like exactly what we once were, we're not going to look exactly what we once were. We're a different population, a different organization. And so we went to the principals to say we were going to give some FTE back, decide how you're going to use that FTE, but it's not going to be exactly the same. Then central office, you know, I, many US board members tried to talk me out of it. We didn't feel Gary Berlini's position. And I certainly, and I'll give credit to Brian and Bob, and this because I was supposed to be equally sharing in the extra duties of pains, but they're very good at protecting me. And they took the bulk of that work on. And, you know, when I see my two colleagues here at six in the morning and seven at night, and what we're doing, and we're too thin. And so again, as we recover, it's changed to reflect and move back. The teacher ratio, the student is, I don't know how to say this one nicely. I honestly believe there was times that, I'll say it this way. So when I lived poor as a young man, I knew, I didn't waste money. Today that I make a little more, I probably at times waste some money, because I have our district at times in the luxury of spending money. It's more the money than they should have probably. And so I watch staffing closer than probably anybody has had. And sometimes that's comfortable for people, but we run staffing tighter and closer. But again, when you look at our class size numbers, they're not accessible, really even maybe increased across the board. But we no longer have a, we used to see often in our classes, particularly secondary level, where maybe we ran a fifteen student section, and then we ran a thirty-two. Where now it's more, we're moving to that twenty to, you know, maybe thirty range. And so the average is still the same, but we've increased the bottom, if that makes sense. And so we're just tightening the organization. So yeah, you're seeing that in that graph. I think multiple, like most things, Brad, multiple reasons.
Yeah, there's not a lot of fluctuation in students per. That one's consistent all the way back to two thousand and three.
Yes, and we've kept it there, down there, yeah.
If you look back to two thousand and three, that's the point in the days we had sixteen administrators. Slap us all over, right here, that. Half that.
Yeah, that table's pretty empty over there. So.
I just had one more.
I was going to say, that's, yep, go ahead.
So is this reflective of what we did twenty minutes ago? We hired another administrator. Is that in?
Is it in?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, because this is the budget moving forward. So this is next year's budget.
So like all the budgets that we do, not, again, not knowing exactly where things will end up, we have that some assumption. So the assumption is, okay, this administrative appointments could happen, so we put it in the budget. Just like anything else, we get down the road and something doesn't happen, that's why we have adjustments to reflect what we're doing. So it's, it's in there. We tried to have a contingency. It's interesting where, I think the last, the, I think he told me twenty new hires. Does that sound right, Mike?
Yeah.
And so we got to project their salaries. We tend to be conservative, meaning we put a lot of them, you know, we know we're going to get one ones, as we call them, category one step ones. But there are categories, you're not going to find anybody in that. So we try to run the side of the higher salaries, so it's built in there, so you don't have to worry about, oh, boy, we had to get this person. Exactly. Same with the benefits side. If that makes sense to you, we put them in like the whole family, just because, you know, they come in as a single, and many one ones will. That's okay.
We air high, but it's close. We air high. You've seen enough of these budgets. We air high on an adopted budget. Don't ever want to come to you and say we built the budget too small. I'd rather do it the other way around.
Well, and I think that that's one of the things I wanted to point out, that I've still been impressed with year after year, is that we still have this budget variance that we come out with. And I know a few years ago, when things were really not looking well, and we were really tightening, the question was, okay, can we still assume that we're going to have the same type of budget variances? And we still seem to have, as credit to everybody in the district.
And you're on a nice tight variance, meaning math, science, people, it's, you know, it's in the same range every year.
Right.
And it's a reasonable range. And you don't have the highs and the lows, which is a good way to be. You can kind of almost predict what your variance can be. You know, and so Bob's always cautious. He'll tell you, you know, range is two to three.
Right.
And it's a nice variance. Lori and I have seen many districts that are consistently higher than that. And that almost is like, maybe not lack of work of putting in and tightening that. But that budget adjustment, first one you do with the year, is also the tightening of that, to get that variance to where you want to be.
My statement often too, when we're administrative meetings, is they'll say, but I give you money back. And I said, that's the variance I got to have. You know, that's, we expect the variance, you know.
Right, right.
We're not going to get that. That's a different way to budget. You know, the goal is not to spend every cent that you get. Have enough to do what you want to do. And if you don't spend it, you want it back. And then it goes to fund balance or to fund something else in some other area. And that happens at times where, as we're finishing accounts up to the end of the year, you need, and it's something that's not avoidable, but we have some variance over here that we can use over.
Excellent. Yes, and the fund balance also, other people have commented, is trending upward. But I, once again, as I say every year, cautiously optimistic, because we all know it was only two years ago, I think, that we sat here in June thinking we were going to have to budget in September. Because the key thing in September is that we don't get a state aid payment. So we need to have that fund balance just to bridge that gap.
Yep.
So, all right. Are there other comments?
Can open up the public if there's any.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak, comment? Anyone?
They're racing up.
All right. All right. Well, thank you. All right. At this time, we will move into item four, which is Board of Education Matters, Presentations to the Board for Action. And the first thing we have, four point one, is administrative appointments.
Yeah. As Brad mentioned, we have some of these tonight. Most of them are one-to-one replacements. One's a different change in title, but it's a one-to-one replacement going forward. The first one we have tonight is Matt Wenzel. And Matt, you're free to come up and speak if you want to say anything. I'll give you a little bit about Matt's background. Matt is coming to us, he's president of the Principal McGregor Elementary in Bay City. He has served in administrative roles since two thousand and eleven, and he's done it at all three levels, high school, middle school, and elementary levels. Brad, Matt has a bachelor's from Saginaw Valley State University and a master's degree from Saginaw Valley State. We're going to hear a lot of Saginaw Valley tonight. Saginaw Valley ought to be proud tonight. Floor is yours, Brad.
Thank you. First, good evening. And I'd like to take this moment to thank Superintendent Sharo at the Board of Education and Mr. Jester for this wonderful opportunity. I'd also like to thank my family for their continued support. And with your permission, if I could introduce them quickly?
Absolutely.
So all the way over to my right is my wife, Katie. Next to her is my daughter, Abby. My daughter Madeline, my daughter Kendall. The boys are going to have to stand up. That's my youngest son in the blonde hair. That's Nathaniel. And then Matthew.
Welcome. Thanks for coming and support your dad.
Very excited.
Nice shirt.
And your husband. I said dad.
Yeah, like their excitement, I'm very excited to join the Midland High team over there. And I look forward to the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year and all the successes that we're going to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
And I like your time, too.
Yeah, I noticed right away.
Our next appointee, you may know, and Melissa Tonner. And a little bit about Melissa, if you don't know Melissa's background. Bennett, MPS is two thousand and four. What you may not know is Melissa was an accountant, I think, prior to MPS. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. She has been a Beatle, Building Technology Director in our district. So she fits this new role very well. She has a bachelor's from Saginaw Valley State, a master's from Grand Canyon University. Her new title, her position, is Media Instructional Technology Specialist. So slightly changed from the position we had before, its title, with our new focus of where we're going. Certainly was a part to get off. Should be spending some time over there.
Well, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I am really excited and looking forward to supporting staff and students with technology needs, instructional technology, and whatever support they need in that way. And it is an exciting time, because, I mean, there are so many things happening with the one-to-one devices and PYP and STEM and all of the other great things that we're doing in the district. So I am excited. So thank you very much. Thank you, Melissa.
And most of you know Margaret by now, because you've seen her a few times. But we need to mention her. So Margaret served as interim principal at Plymouth this year. And she will assume that position going forward. And a little bit you may or may not know about Margaret. She is a Midland High graduate, so that fits right in with Midland High back there tonight. And she holds a bachelor's degree from MSU in education and a Spanish and master's from Saginaw, Special Ed in Saginaw Valley. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Something like that. Okay. And she joined MPS in two thousand and four as elementary Spanish teacher in thirteen years. She has been thirteen years with us. And she has taught in six MPS schools. So she's ready for this position as well. You'll notice that's a theme today, this well-rounded background of our people tonight. In July of two thousand and six, she was appointed to Plymouth Elementary School.
Yeah. And like everyone else, I just want to say thank you to you guys. I was very excited when given the opportunity to be interim, but I was nervous. I'm looking forward to my second year kind of doing this. And I just want to say that kudos to MPS for doing the mentor program they did with me, having Bridget Hockemeyer be my mentor. I don't think I could have done it without her. I don't think I could have done it without the help of all the other principals. So just a really great MPS family helped me to be where I am today. And I'm very excited. I'm excited to start the new year with the building a little more settled than it was. And I'm just very happy to have this opportunity. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
I bet you'll enjoy that big gymnasium cafeteria, too.
Yes, I will. And actually, just while we're talking about it, we're planning on doing our fall festival. It'll actually look like a winter festival, kind of carnival night when that opens, instead of when we typically do it in the fall. So of course, you're all welcome.
All right.
Everybody loves a good bounce house.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So a little bit of blend of in-house personnel, plus some coming from the outside. And the last one I'll introduce has got a blend of both, right, at this point. And that mentorship program did work well. And we're going to, I wrote to you Friday that we're going to try to continue that again. And I'll speak a little bit at the close of the meeting about that tonight. And the last one, you know very well, so Janet Greif returning. And her background, you know, being in MPS is a plus. Plus, now she's game superintendent. I'm telling you, that's like the big one, right? And so having a couple of years under her belt there as well is going to assist her in moving forward. She has been an administrator in our district at every level as well. And that's going to be a plus. to be a plus, serving us coming forward. And she started her, her career as a building administrator in Bay City, so she was there. And she has her bachelor's and master's from Saginaw Valley State University. And you know Janet, she really struggled tonight. Mike, are you sure the board's going to be okay? I'm not here, not there. I said, Janet, I would expect you to do nothing else but to be at your last board meeting, leading the school district that you're paid to be leading. So that's where she is tonight.
Well, I've already had lots of comments from people who are very excited that she's coming back. And then this also goes into what you were alluding to before, that a few years ago, when Gary did retire, there was a lot of nervousness on the board when we were, you know, reducing at this level, an administrator, and, you know, just the workload and everything. And so I'm very happy that we're able to add Gary's, well, it's not Gary's specific position.
No.
But bringing back to the level that we were at three years ago, probably now.
Yeah, same level manpower, but associate versus assistant.
Right, right.
Certainly the duties have divided, as Brad mentioned, that matrix is a little bit different as we go on forward, to our skill sets, to the skill setting of people that we have here.
All right. Well, at this time, I'll take a motion to approve the administrative appointments.
So moved.
Support. Move by Scott, supported by Lynn. Is there any additional discussion at this time?
I'm just very excited with, everyone we talked about looks like a great group, cast of characters.
Cast of characters. All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. Congratulations to all of you. And thank you.
Thank you.
Austin, Roger.
All right. Moving into item 4.2, which is the Salary Letter for Employee Groups. They may want to stick around for this.
Yeah, they already know it. They already know the salary. So like annually, we present a salary letter to you. It's way before me in the tradition of how we present. And I think really, when I came here and looked at the salary letter, so that's different, but you have, you know, such a diversity of employee groups. I think someone had good thinking when they came up with the salary letter. So it's all there in detail for you in history, so I won't go too far in it, but a couple of things I do want to point out is, we have 14 groups of employees, so that kind of gives you a sense of why we need this. At this point, we have contracts in place with the Michigan Federation of Paraprofessionals through June of 18, Midland City Education Association through August of 2019, which is the teachers, electronic and electronic learning facilitators, the Midland City Educational Support Personnel Association, which is our maintenance grounds employees, through September of 2019. So as Brad and Bob said earlier, very nice to have all employees settled and move through with good labor relations, which we haven't always been in that position. So it's worked very well at this point in time going forward. Other groups of employees listed there for you, I won't read them all, but you can see we have many from administrative assistants to transportation employees listed, we deal with as well. All got approximately 1% increase in wages, salary and wages, but of course, the whole package is more than that, because you have benefits and you have, each of our contracts are unique, from, they get concessions back in conferences, and they get concessions back in tuition, do those different pieces for every employee group. And then we do have some other unusual things going on as well, because of some of our, our employee groups that are near that, that minimum wage group. And so, or also maybe hard to recruit at this point, we're going to have to continue to look at that. Teachers are beginning to fall in that category as well, so we may have to get creative with our association on how we recruit teachers into this area. But we saw 50 cent increases needed for both the bus drivers and workstation support technicians. Bus drivers is a desk group, labor group, statewide, nationwide, anything you read, hard to find. Someone might sit around and wait 10, 12 hours to get four or five hours, then they drive in the morning, then drive into the afternoon. It's a difficult job that way, and so that, we need to raise that, and we did so with 50 cents. Workstation support technicians, their skill levels continue to go up, what they need to be able to do. We lose some of these people to higher skill level jobs, and so trying to retain the ones we have, a 50 cent increase there as well. The preschool assistant that we use had to increase due to the minimum wage portion of that as well. Central auditorium is with its reopening, we've always had in there something called an auditorium technician, which is kind of limited employee. It's, Bob probably describes it better than me, but, you know, on a night where we need sound help, or those type of pieces where the auditorium directors are either not available or doing other things, this position's in there. And so we have updated that position going forward. Minimum wage goes to 925 per hour, and we bolded those in the letter for you to know, those that were required to move up because of that. Merit negotiated wages are in there as well, and required by law, so you'll see a different range of those merit wages being in there. And then, of course, you deal with me differently in a separate contract, it's a totally different employee, and it's really being your main or only employee that you deal with on that sort of portion of it, so. The last thing Bob did mention tonight is the MIPs rates. It's all over the board, it is paid down some, there's six, seven different plans, Bob, is that right? No? That's going on from us older folks to the newer folks, and different types of plans. And so your rate, sometimes we give you an average, or what we, the low and the high, and here we have the low and the high for you. We pay 20.96% all the way up to 25.5%. Would be like 33, 34 if the state didn't pay that down, just so you know. And then you get the rest of it, it's got the history, what concessions we're giving, what they've gotten back through time, so it's a good letter, showing all those pieces.
This time, I will take a motion for approval of the Salary Letter for Employee Groups.
I move to approve the Salary Letter for Employee Groups.
Support.
All right. Move by Pam, support by Scott. This time, any discussion? All right. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. The Salary Letter is approved. Moving into 4.3, which is the Michigan High School Athletic Association.
Yeah, so annually, you have to make this resolution to join. It is a choice, and so our Attorney General has said it's a choice, and so therefore, we're to annually do that. When you do so, if you guys are agreeing to adopt all rules of the Michigan High School Athletic Association going forward, so it's an annual thing.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, you know what? Let me add, Angela, in the past, you've taken a roll call vote on this, as Cindy and I have looked at the Open Meetings Act and some of the things that you have done. This is one I don't think you need to do. You know, kind of some of the ones you've done has fallen under what they call something major, something large happened. And so the tax resolution later on, it's not required, but I think you should still do it. Some people make paying taxes as a major thing, so that might be a good one. Joining them, just to say, I think it's something more, just a standard, everyday practice that we need to do, so.
All right. Well, then we will do that. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of item 4.3.
So moved.
Do we have to, I think we have to read it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
I agree. I move the Board of Education to adopt the MHSAA resolution for two Midland Public Schools, sorry, for the two Midland Public Schools, middle schools, and two high schools for the 2017-18 school year. A complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support. All right. The move by Scott, supported by Mary. All right. At this time, is there any discussion? All right. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. Moving into item 4.4, which is our NEOLA Spring 2017 Board Policy Revisions.
So twice a year, we get those. Annually, we adopt a spring one, and if you call NEOLA, it's a firm that's multi-state, that adopts policies, I'm going to say, upward to 90% of the school districts in the state of Michigan. Michigan School Board once said that, and they got out, and NEOLA became the game to go to. And the benefit of having that is, you know, they have attorneys on file, so much of it's legal today, they're able to vet those policies, write those policies. For us, few options always in them, and so I try to go through the options with our consultant. I meet with a consultant from NEOLA, Cindy and I in the room for four or five hours sometimes, and, and go through each of these policies. And then recently, been our practice is to review those changes with the administrative services, which we did, excitingly, about a week ago, I think.
Good time.
Excellent.
So they've been reviewed, vetted, and we're now asking for your approval to adopt them. Takes a month or two before they actually show up on the electronic form there, so be aware of that as well.
All right. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, the way approved the policies of NEOLA.
All right.
Court.
All right. Move by Lynn, support by Patrick. Is there any discussion?
So did you have any exciting conversations about any of them, or was it kind of?
I don't think, Brad, Brad did a good job of reading them all, but nothing big, I would say, huh, Brad?
No, I don't think so.
Nothing out of line with your recommendations or what you did.
No, yeah, what we kind of did, and a lot of it, so much of it, I hate when I was explaining to the ministers, local controls kind of take away a lot of policy, and it used to be, you know, boards set policy, you still do, don't get me wrong, but I mean, a lot of it's dictated to you, so.
Yes.
Some were new and some were updated, so it was just.
Yeah.
Adapting to today.
Right.
And making changes where we needed them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, most are revised policies, some language has been a few.
Yep. Gone were the days when I got to go to meetings every week, when we reviewed those before you came.
We talked about that.
Yeah, thank goodness for NEOLA.
You all missed out on a lot of fun. All right. Any other comments? Thank you all on the administrative committee for going through all those.
Well, really, Cindy and Mike for putting in the long hours. We just got the executive summaries, and they did the real hard work.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. This will be updated. All right. Moving into item 4.5, which is Approval of the Summer Tax Rate. Bob, to you.
Yeah, this is, you want to feel like you do this many times during the year, but remember, like in November, we'll ask you to give me a resolution that tells the city we're going to do tax collections twice. This one is to tell them how much, and they're waiting patiently for this one. I direct you, if you're looking at it, to the second page. Everything on the first page is pretty standard language there. When you hit the second page, really, what's going on there? The first part, we're asking on the hold harmless mileage to, excuse me, on the non-homestead mileage for nine mils, just splits that 18 in half. On the hold harmless, we're asking for .9, which means we'll follow up with .81 on the second one, and three on the commercial personal property, again, that's part of the six, so that's just split in half, and of course, 1.36 on the bond, which splits the 272. Only in the city, on city properties, not even county. Cities doing that, so we send them the resolution, and they levy those taxes, of course.
All right. Now, this is another one that whoever would like to make a motion?
I'll read it.
All right.
Okay. I move to approve the resolution certifying the tax rate, that is, to be levied in the summer of 2017 on the property of the school district within the city of Midland. A complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support. All right. Move by Scott, support by Pam. Is there any discussion at this time? All right. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right. Moving into 4.6, which is the Superintendent Contract Renewal.
Was that supposed to be?
Oh, it was.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You can do it either way, but I would suggest you continue with that practice.
Steve, threw me for a loop after the last one.
I did, but.
All right. We are ready for a roll call vote.
President Brant's answer.
Yes.
Vice President Singer.
Yes.
Treasurer Fizzi.
Yes.
Member Baker.
Yes.
Member Blazy.
Yes.
Member Fidel.
Yes.
And I'm also yes.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much for catching that. All right. Moving into 4.6, which is Superintendent Contract Renewal. And I know I had the opportunity to talk to all of you, right along with the rest of our employee groups. Mike's contract is separate from everybody else's, and so this time of the year, we always look to renew it. We established it when he came here four years ago, and since that time, I think you have made, you know, some concessions like the other groups. And so in that same, along with that same, this time, and I had discussed with all of you, we are looking to make just a couple changes to what is in there. Keep most of the language. We are going to first off, add an additional year onto the contract, which will, it's scrolling over, we'll keep it as a five-year contract as it is right now, so it will run from July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2022. Like most all other employee groups, we will increase your annual salary by 1%. And you will maintain the concessions that you have up to this point. You are, will forego the expected budget surplus stipend, and we will establish an annuity payment equal to 4.5% of your base salary, which is in line with most other superintendents' contracts. So in keeping with that, and that really is taking that expected budget surplus and the concessions that you have that really have been sunsetted out of most other contracts, and instead putting it into this annuity payment. So those are the proposed changes to the contract. So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the contract as run.
Support.
All right. Move by Pam, support by Scott. This time, do we have any discussion?
I, I think Mike came in low, as far as how he was compensated, and I guess we owe Angela and Jerry a big thank you for bringing in, giving us such a good deal, but I think it's, it's time, and it's, I feel really good about offering this up. And when Mike came in, he asked for nothing. And, and normally, a vehicle was provided to our superintendent, and he didn't want a vehicle. I also reviewed over 24 different superintendents in the state at school, at districts that are around the same size, with around the same test scores as we had, and our superintendent salary fell to the bottom. Not all the way to the bottom, but close. And for me, that, that meant that we needed to make some changes, and I think this was much needed, and I'm glad we're doing that, so. And adding another year to the contract and keeping him around to 2022 is great, because my son graduates in 2021, so we'll be out at Blue Stadium.
Someday I'll graduate, I'll.
Yes, and I should have said that. We did collect, Bob did a lot of data collection for me, so we could really look at, you know, what is out there, and like I think I had said to all of you, really, for a superintendent, the peer group is other superintendents. It's not, you know, anyone else in our school district, so that's really who we need to[1684.16] It's not, you know, anyone else in our school district, so that's really who we need to use when we benchmark the contract that we do offer to. Is there any other comments? Questions? All right. At this time, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, and thank you, Mike.
I was making a comment this weekend, I was back in my hometown, supporting an alumni in a golf outing, and they asked me about Midland and the board, and they said, you know, I've worked for great boards, and your board's changed here. And I was thinking, I worked for a great board, it makes you understand, since I've been there, how many phases here, three, four?
So.
You know, and again, it continues to be a great board, seriously, a great board, great community to work for, guys. I didn't know how smart I was by taking this. But I do also, just want to add, you know, when we came in and met with Angela and Jerry, you know, did, did look at where Carl was, and we did, and did take less, because partly where the finances where we are, so appreciate the increase, but, you know, we got to be reasonable, keep in line with all the places, it's very much aligned the same with all the other employees.
All right. Great, moving on to item five, which is request to address the board. Roger? All right, I think we will move on to item six, which is administrative services. And it looks like there was a meeting, so Lynn?
We did.
You would read that.
We met on June 7th, and Brad and Scott, Mike, Cindy and myself were there. And we met on, at the meeting tonight. Mr. Shero will bring for action to the Board of Education, policy changes to a number of Midland Public Schools policies as recommended by Neola in our spring 2017 updates. Neola retains law firms to provide legal reviews of published materials and consults on policy updates in the spring and fall each year. Therefore, the legal accuracy and compliance of proposed revisions can be unequivocally guaranteed. Mr. Shero and the Administrative Services Committee members discuss these policies that have proposed changes, and, and they are listed in, in our minutes. The policies that will be presented tonight will be included in the documentation for board members to review before the meeting. So if anybody has any questions or wants to go back and review those, they are available. And we will meet when we are needed again.
All right, thank you very much. Moving into item seven, which is curriculum instruction and assessment, 7.1. Pam?
Yes, I have meeting minutes. On Monday, May 15th, we met at the Building Trades Home. Scott Cochran, Kevin Dotick, and Bill Brown were guest presenters. And the Building Trades House Tour was led by Kevin Dotick, the Building Trades teacher, Bill Brown, City of Midland Building Department Liaison, and Scott Cochran, Auxiliary Education Curriculum Specialist. And they discussed the overall Building Trades project and partnership for the 2016-17 school year. This year's partnership included the City of Midland and the Rees Endeavor. The duplex is fully compliant with Americans with Disability Act requirements, being fully handicapped accessible, barrier-free, and includes zero-step construction. In the final weeks of the school year, students will be putting the final touches on the interior and exterior of the home and property. You know, whenever I walk into one of these homes and they have that zero-step construction, I, I am so excited about how they do that, all the planning that has to go into that, but everywhere you go, you can just roll right in, and it's a really neat design. That's all I have.
All right, 7.2, district school improvement plans.
Yep, and this really is the notice to you all that the district and school improvement plans have been completed, and that they are available for review in my office. We don't officially attach them to your minutes because it might break the internet size of what these documents are. Much like the budgeting process, the drafting of these plans is quite a complex venture. We actually start in the late winter and early spring drafting these. Building teams collaborate down here in three separate sessions to build their improvement plans, and as a district, we also collaborate as well with each of the four core subject areas over a period of many months. In addition, the district dance school improvement plan both get vetted through our D-SIC committee, District School Improvement Committee, and those meetings have included as well. So those are ready and available for review for anyone that would like to see them, and we'll ask that you move on these to officially approve them at the July board meeting.
All right, and we always have a board member, and Brad, this year you served on there, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, moving into 7.3.
And tonight for 7.3, we bring forward three adoptions. We have an IBAP Biology text, an IBSL Organic and Environmental Chemistry text, and also a Geometry text that'll be used for three different classes, Geometry Point Two and Integrated Math One and Two. And those texts have all been vetted by our internal committees. That paperwork is on file, as well as the actual physical texts as well, they're available outside of my office. And so those are also now being brought for informational purposes. We'll ask for you guys to move for action on those items at the July board meeting, and we will only purchase those if there are available funds within the 17, 18 adopt budget.
All right. I can let Sarah Brant get a head start, I guess, at IBAP. All right, moving into item eight, FFO. Patrick?
Yep, we met June 5th. Had two main topics of discussion, bond update and finances for the district. For the bond update, Mr. Dombrow Barton-Mell reviewed and discussed with the committee the work completed at various sites across the district to date in the scheduled summer work. Mr. Jerome French Associates made the committee aware of changes in the building code which might affect future bond projects.
Yes, that was a surprise.
Number two, the finance, we've already discussed most of this tonight and approved, maybe all of it here. We discussed with Mr. Cooper and Mrs. Holderby, April financial reports, upcoming summer tax resolution and millage rates, 17, 18 proposed budget, 17, 18 employee salary letter, and then superintendent's compensation package. We have the next meeting set for Monday, July 10th at the Lock.
All right, thank you very much. Moving into 8.2, Bob.
Yes, I think I have counted 24 gifts tonight. Forty thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Information only, but you'll notice there's some from a couple parents, the different organizations there, from individuals. The Detroit Pistons basketball one is through Larry Jacobs, who had gotten that, and so he could bring back a grant to somebody in the district that he thought was worthwhile. He works with the drama. You'll notice the Jefferson Fairen Advisory Committee, the Sports Boosters, both the Dow High and Midland High, very active in bringing forth things. And like always, the Midland Community Foundation, we have a couple that people apply through, through the Youth Action Council, and then the community gives where our sports teams perform community service and get money back through that, through Dow Chemical and the area community foundation. So that's for information. Like always, appreciative, and at the end of this meeting, of course, that whole list will run there. Do have something for action under 8.3. Because of the size of the gifts, if you remember, the board needs to take actions on these. These are both from the Midland High Athletic Boosters Club. There is one for, together, it's eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. There's one for roughly twelve thousand dollars, for softball scoreboard, and the other is sixty-five hundred for a discus cage, and that requires your board approval tonight.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 8.3.
I move that we approve the gifts under 8.3.
Support.
Move by Scott, support by Pam. Is there any discussion?
Wow.
Exactly.
I agree, Mary. Wow. Kind of takes my breath away.
Yes.
Amazing, wonderful support.
And really, you think that the booster club support is, a lot of it, it's parents coming together, it's the booster bash that year after year, parents come together, and there are a lot of planning put on this great event for both schools together, and I think this, especially this month, really displays how many different things it touches, you know, all the sports, I, you know, so many different sports are beneficiaries of all this. So appreciative to everybody who works so hard to help. All right, any other comments?
I was gonna say, I even noticed just it goes across the curriculum.
Yes.
You know, looking at mixers and, you know, literature supplies, science units, sports, often there's things for music programs, and, and so it just covers a whole gamut, and we're so grateful because without those generous gifts, we would not be able to do all that we do.
Yes, definitely. I had to do a double take on what mixers were. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, 8.3 passes, and thank you once again. Moving into 8.4.
Still have a little bit more for information. These are gifts, but they're actually gifts of items. If you've been to Central Park Elementary, you know they have a live wall right inside the gateway, and the plants, which are, have approximate value of fifteen hundred dollars are being donated by French Associates, our architect, who very pleased with the building they've designed, they're getting a lot of kudos for it, and would like to give something back to us, which I thought was very nice that they would do that. And the other one is from Jennifer Suarez, who's, and her husband, but she's a teacher for us, and they're donating three bookcases for Northeast, and you can see there's an approximate value there, five hundred and fifty. Doesn't require any board action, but it's just items which we get from time to time, so we're just listing them.
All right. Thank you.
Who's gonna be the gardener?
That's what I wondered. Bridgette or?
I think if Brian told me correctly, and I think I was there too, the first go-around, they're gonna plant, there's color in it, too.
It's gonna form a seed.
So they're gonna put a seed in when they, I think it can change after that, but when it starts, it's gonna have green in the end.
Nice.
I am excited to see that, for the amateur gardener that I am.
Who's gonna volunteer and sign up there? Yeah. Maybe they could take on watering.
Yeah.
Could be. All right, moving into item nine, human resources.
We have a staff member announced retirement that we have taken the year before, Linda McDonald, a special education teacher in the Special Services Department, and will be at the end of the school year.
All right, well, thank you very much for her years of service to the district. All right, item 10 is correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Those are all listed. Item 11 is our scheduled activities for the rest of the year. Please note, we do have a second board meeting in June, and that will be June 26th, and that's where, as we stated before, we will approve next year's budget and approve our final budget from this year. At this time, we'll move into study discussion section, where, session where we hear from board members, and so Brad, I'll start with you tonight.
Okay. As we talked about, we went through all the Neola policies and the bylaws for the Board of Education. In the packet of the bylaws, under the agenda item, which is 0166, says, "The agenda for each regular meeting shall be mailed or delivered to each board so as to provide proper time for the member to study the agenda." Generally, the agenda will be delivered so as to provide time for the study of the agenda by the member. I'm not making a motion. I'd like to put something out there for discussion that we could move forward and talk about this, could be possibly something that we can derive for our next meeting or a following meeting, is that these packets have grown in size, and there's a lot of documentation in there, and I would like to throw out my idea, when I had talked to Angela about it, was adjusting other timeframes. When we have our committee meetings and/or our financial documents are available, my dream would be to have four business days. Now, if we can't achieve the four business days, I understand that, but that's what my request is, is we can have four business days from the delivery of the packet until we have our meeting on Monday night. To give us proper time, whether we have obligations on weekends, whatever else is going on, I would like to have a little bit more time to process this information and to improve my participation as a board member, as well as other people at this table. That, when we have a 213-page document, it's a lot to go through it all. Granted, 90 pages of it were Neola and some of the policy things that you don't really have to take serious action on, but I would like to put it out there for future discussion and/or if we plan it into our upcoming calendar. So that is a request of mine.
All right, and that's what I thought, by putting it out tonight, we could really, people can think through, because there's, you know, pluses and minuses on both sides.
Clarification, four business days. I said, I had that as Tuesday. Four days would be Thursday, and if you check MASP or schools across the state, there's no one that can meet the Tuesday. A Thursday should, could be a very reasonable goal to do for sure, as you think going forward. Or financials, for example, for the district, you're gonna be approving them so late would be a major one. The putting the book together, you know, go back to when you had two board meetings, Ross and Cindy did.
Right, right, right.
And she, you would be backing her time up as well, into that piece as well on there. She's so dependent on business department and HR department and them to get some of the documents, that's usually the delay. I certainly think we can make a Thursday goal, hit that, would be work, that's just coming from my side. So, you know, I didn't know, when you said four business days, I say Tuesday in my head, or if it's four days.
I was thinking four business days, which would be close to business on Tuesday, so we'd have something at the end of Tuesday, or waiting for us Monday, or Wednesday morning, something like that. So we have the four, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday.
So I think we just need to understand what goes into it, which is why when you emailed, I thought, great discussion to have, so that we all have a good understanding of, you know, what goes into it and all the different groups that are providing information, and where the, you know, deadlines are and what drives those, so.
Yep, I completely understand that, and I think that in order to have more time to spend with this and to be able to formulate questions and have a timely manner to get some questions answered, that I would like to have more time with the packet, and I think that it could benefit all of us.
So I think, can we just, we'll look into that a little more and put together something?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you have other things?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Moving on to Lynn.
All righty. I just wanted to comment on the fact that there was another IB, fifth grade IB PYP exhibition, and I'm sorry, I couldn't get over to Adams tonight, but I've been to the one before, and just to comment that these exhibitions and activities that these young people are doing are just absolutely amazing, far different than the projects I did when I was a fifth grader, so I'm excited as we move forward to be able to see more of the kind of things the kiddos are doing. And as we talk about elementary school, I was able to get over to Eastlon and Carpenter for their, their school celebrations, as they are celebrating all the years of being Eagles and Crusaders, I believe, and that was a fun, a fun afternoon, and to see so many people there, that alumni even that came, it was really fun, from alumni teachers to students. I know at Eastlon, they thought the furthest person had come from Wisconsin, and somebody hollered out and said, no, I'm from California, so it was, it was fun. It was fun to see what they were doing. And then, as far as thinking about their new school, was Central Park Elementary, I just thought it was so exciting to see the kiddos here, and I loved the song and the logo, and just the excitement that's going with that, and so Cindy, I'll definitely want to know when they're going over, I want to see the looks on their faces now when they go into the building. Congratulations to our shining stars, Dave and Lynn, once again. I just, I just love the, the variety of people that we honor and all the great things that they do. And I'm so excited to have Janet back, and welcome to MAD, and congratulations to Melissa and Margaret. It's just kind of fun to have all this new energy coming in at the administrative level. And I guess the last thing I'd say is, good luck on exams, kids, the next three days. I hope it's not too hot, but on Friday, summer begins, and lots of fun activities, and I know school, school here doesn't end, and there'll be lots of things going on in the building, so enjoy your last few days of school, and picnics and parties, those that aren't doing, having exams, and enjoy your summer.
Very good. After talking tonight, I'm very excited about the expansion of middle school electives, maybe, possibly something project lead the way for middle school. And just looking, looking at the numbers and the budget, and, and hopeful for some of that at-risk money, and hopeful for opportunities anyway, to make little, little changes that might impact these kids is great. So that's what I look forward to. The other thing that, that was interesting to me was the new building requirements for our, our building process and how that's gonna impact Chestnut Hill and Seabird, and I'll be interested to see the new design for that building that with the new code has to withstand 250 mile an hour winds, so.
Well, I think they're still checking on where we fall in that, though, right?
Well, the additions, yeah, they're seeing if that falls. Law's the law, but there's additions, but there wasn't real hopeful.
Right.
I don't think we've ever had 250 mile an hour winds in Midland, Michigan, but it'll be the safest building around, right? Big congratulations, go ahead, Lynn.
Maybe costly, too.
Very, yeah, right, that's the apprehension. Congratulations to Janet Greif and Matt Wenzel, I'm, I'm super excited to have them join our team. And thank Bay City for sending us some of their best. And just wonderful gifts that were given that Bob went through tonight, such generosity is certainly appreciated.
All right, Scott?
A lot of my things are checked off. Alls I have left to talk about are really just a request from three of my children to give public shout-outs to their teachers for what they described as a magical year.
Awesome.
To Ms. Andrews, Ms. Ramackel, and Ms. Jolly, thank you on behalf of Sebastian, Connor, and Cameron. They really enjoyed it, and they're just loving life, two of them at Seabird, and Cameron's really excited to join our brothers, so that's all I have.
Cool.
All right, not much new by me that hasn't been said already, although I am grateful, after sitting through
Although I am grateful, after sitting through commencement at Midland High, was it last week already, two weeks ago? Of course, it's hot, then cold offspring, then it's hot that day. Next year should, will be wonderful. I'd heard a few comments of people passing by about, next year it's gonna be this, and walk outside afterwards, and it's 65 and beautiful, so looking forward to that. Look, it's always hot, doesn't matter, those days, it's always hot. Then, been said, but just the fun balance and where things are going, and to go up almost 3% of an 80 million dollar budget is no small change, so appreciate the work and diligence. That is it for me.
Thank you. Mary?
I don't have a whole lot more that hasn't already been said. You guys took it really well. I just wanted to say that it was really awesome for me to be able to be at Dow High graduation and see the graduates going through from a different perspective, being as a school board member, I was really honored, and shaking their hands, it was really extraordinary.
All right, thanks. Let's see, I have, well, in the last week, I was able to sign the paperwork for Carpenter and East Lawn for IB. And I believe that those then will transfer into Central Park, and they will automatically be, am I correct in that statement?
Correct. Few documents or something on there.
Formality we had to fill out.
Okay, okay, excellent. So that was very exciting. I know, just in some communications, little overwhelming, all the bond work that's gonna go on this summer, that, I'm assuming a lot of it come Friday, it's gonna be bam, you know?
For a long time, we had two, three Barton Mallow folks that worked here in NPS, you know, got five or six, so we almost need a nameless now, we're starting to see.
Right, I was thinking we're finishing up Central Park, finishing up the auditorium, Woodcrest and Plymouth, secure entrances in all buildings, we have new buses coming, new technology, so once again, thank you, thank you to the community who's supporting all of this through their property tax dollars. So it's been very exciting this summer to see a lot of changes in all schools. Let's see, final exams I know are coming up, and elementary school parties, sadly, we're past the party point at our house, and we're to the final exam stages, so not quite as fun of a week at our house as at Scott's house. Congrats to all of the 2017 graduates, like Mary said, just such a highlight, I think, for all of us as board members, to be able to attend graduation, and really honor all the graduates for everything they've, you know, all the hard work they've put in for 13 years, and just, you know, great experience, great speakers. I was at Dow High, and just, I'm always amazed at how well the kids speak, and the teacher was outstanding at Dow High, who spoke this year, too, and just a wonderful evening, and it was hot at Dow High, too, for all of you that were at Midland High. I had a friend who was sitting up in the upper level who told me how hot it was. And then, finally, just, as my complete says, fourth year leading our district, I'm just really happy tonight that we're able to renew your contracts, as we all collectively work to support all the children in our community.
Yep.
So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll turn it over to you.
One last thing I'd mention, East Lawn Carpenter, quite a task when you think about two buildings, high socioeconomic need, and so what a great task to get that authorization. And they're going into a school where they're gonna mix STEM and IB PYP going forward, so and as far as we can tell, we're not sure anyone's out there doing that mix, so it's gonna be kind of neat and kind of fun to do as well. I wrote to you about Chromebooks for staff, so staff are turning in their iPads and getting those, and by the way, you need to do the same in the next few weeks, Dave will probably be calling yours in, get ready for the Chromebook. He assures me, he showed Cindy, I think, that the board book works well on there, so going forward, but little different tools, so if you're not techie, we may need some help, and there's plenty of tutoring that Dave has for you online as well. Administrative mentoring, I mentioned that earlier, and so our hope is to work out that agreement with MCA. It'd still be a teaching position, like Margaret was this year, we used almost the same pattern. There's some guarantees and pieces that they needed, and we didn't use Margaret for evaluation. So one thing she didn't do as an administrative value, teachers can't go and validate, oh, that's a big piece for them, a few other pieces of it, but the initial discussion was Mark, with Mark was, he was open to it, and he would take it to his governing board. And so I'm trying to finish up, well, it's called a letter of understanding to get there as well. Not only to build our own talent pool, but I'll make no bones about it, it's the day I met Susan Johnson over at Seabird, and I thought, wow, you know, 600 students by yourself is a task. That 600's come to 610, 615, you see that we have several social education groups in that building, we need manpower. It was probably something that I had put in my back of my mind that I thought about doing with Margaret, if she hadn't become a principal, maybe shifting, and so this mentoring program, like, is the perfect mix. We get some assistance, and a start with Seabird, it could be in other buildings, if things occur or go on, and we're exposing somebody to it, they can decide if they like this part of education, or they don't after a couple of years, and even after one, they could opt out, I suppose, and we go to another one, and we get the chance to see if we like their performance as well. So I think it's a plus-bus going forward. Bond work, lots going on, I wrote to you about all those pieces of it, as I said, Barton Mallow's had to add staff and get ready to go for this buildup, so a big push to the fall. There's a lot of stress going on about teachers moving out of those classes right now, so you may have to do some counseling, if you can, on some of that.
I think I saw a huge dumpster at Carpenter, didn't I, when I drove by tonight?
Dumpster at all the buildings, and we've encouraged them for a long time to do so, so going forward. Positive budget information, still say we have, you know, I use 13 to 15%, I think we were talking, but in Mike's world, I like 15 to 17%, but I figure some people would debate with me if that's excessive. I really do think 15 to 17% is where school districts should be, fluctuating, you know, back and forth as you need that to go forward, and so we're heading in a good trend. You know, it's really a mix out there on state economic news, you need to watch that because, you know, it obviously feels like the squared budget, you know, you hear at one moment some indicators indicating things are picking up, but there's some scary things in there at times to wonder about what's gonna happen as well in our state, and so hence the reason cautious slow growth as we go forward, not too fast as we go forward.
Yeah, I watch a lot of automotive trends in my line of work, so.
Yeah, and I do, too. I use the automotive still, because we're so automotive-driven, and so I always have followed it, you know, I tease, and Bob's heard me say on this, that 2007, when I told everybody we needed to cut, I had 22% fund balance, and all of the superintendents going, what are you looking at? Why would you think that? So I think I was ahead of the trend, because, but it was economic automotive data that was scaring the heck out of me about where we were heading, and so I think that is a great indicator going forward, even though we're a chemical town here. Speaking of chemical town, Dow products used at Central Park Elementary School, so we emphasize that, we hope to get some savings, so what we were told is, you know, get straight discounts, but Dow would certainly tell key vendors, if they specified that product, that they might sell to those key tradesmen or vendors cheaper. We don't know that, how that worked out, but we worked on it, but, you know, in this town, it was important to have Dow products, and I think you have a list of 12 there that we used of their products in there. Now, there's a few other DuPont ones, because Dow didn't make them, but they're in there as well. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Right, is there anything else? Thank you, everybody, and with that, we will end during the board meeting.